Good evening. It is Wednesday, March 1st, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. And would everyone please rise if they are able for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. And our first order of business is public comment. The school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of 10 minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. Have we any public comment? Certainly. And please state your name and address.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Darryl Plant, and I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to respond to some of the statements made by this committee at the February 15th meeting, many of which were in response to my comments and questions during the February 1st meeting. And I'd like to thank the committee members for their thoughtful responses. Ms. Archenbold, with respect to the transportation policy, first, every taxpayer's child should be offered a seat on a bus as a matter of principle. Second, it's reasonable to require signup by a specific date so the school can plan accordingly. Third, I have not seen an accommodation for new residents. With respect to the equity auditors not being quarried, you said they didn't need to because they were accompanied by school staff at all times. Parents of students are not allowed to volunteer or have access to the student population without being quarried. So when and by which means were all Lunenburg school staff notified that the equity auditors were not being quarried and would therefore need to be escorted by all, by staff members at all times? Mr. Beardmore, speaking to SEL being mandatory, you said, "We who disagree with the policy are not being forced into participating," and that we have choices: homeschooling, private school, or maybe move. It's a free country, you said. Well, what do you say to the single parent who works 50 to 60 hours per week and can't homeschool, or send their child to private school, or move? You know, Mr. Beardmore, neither my wife nor I have ever questioned the legitimacy of this committee. We simply disagree with your collective judgment. You also said there is a lack of trust between parents and teachers when it comes to SEL. Trust and respect are earned. For over three years now, my wife and I have met with teachers, principals, and even this committee, and we have had one overriding and consistent concern: will all the children be appropriately challenged? Each and every time, we were looked in the eye, and the response was yes. Yet, children that were at or above grade level were not challenged, and but for their parents, would have lost more ground. So to say there is a lack of trust is a gross understatement. Mr. Scullumbrine, while you attempted to address a statement I've made numerous times, neither this committee nor the administration has provided any evidence or study showing that a similar community with similar demographics to Lunenburg experienced improved grades as a result of a mandatory SEL program. You said you reviewed dozens of studies and articles and cited three, which I reviewed as well. Like you, I'm not a subject matter expert and have limited amount of time here, but I do have some general observations. The Castle report.
Three minutes.
That would be three minutes, sir, if you could wrap up quickly.
Sure. Just another minute, please.
I also don't want you to lose your place and get your points across.
That's okay. One of the reports referred to the other two reports, and there was a quote from that report. It was "The empirical basis for linking SEL to academic performance." Given that the theoretical SEL model proposed by Castle, 2003, is yet to receive substantial empirical support, we are unable to conclude whether the poor discriminative validity is measurement or theory-specific. Therefore, further work is needed towards the empirical validation of Castle's 2003 social-emotional competency construct. The other highlights from that same report, SEL did not predict academic attainment. That's a direct quote. Another direct quote, "Mental health difficulties was the only statistically significant mediator." And two other notable conclusions: the majority of SEL studies focus on behavioral outcomes and relatively few address the impact of SEL on academic achievement. Second, there is a lack of direct association between social-emotional competence and academic attainment. We must stop playing musical chairs with the curriculum. As I stated previously, my wife and I have been asking the teachers, principals, and administration for over three years now, will all children be appropriately challenged? It took three years for the administration to implement a tiered approach within the classrooms, and that's three years too long. In closing, the equity audit included a definition of equity from the dictionary. Unless we missed it, we've not yet heard of any committee member define it. After nearly two years, the preliminary discussions of an equity audit began. It seems each of you have had ample time to think about it. Please, will each of you individually provide us with, in practical terms, your personal view of what equity means to you and what it means for Lunenburg Public Schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Any comments from the committee? Mr. Beardmore?
This week, the superintendent shared a, in email form, to all families, this Title I report card. And for those who are watching, I would encourage everybody to take a look at that and use some of the drop-down menus and dig into that information to look and understand how Lunenburg schools are faring relative to demographics, funding, and achievement as measured through the lens of MCAS, which is really the achievement measuring stick that was used in that report. I found it pretty interesting. My takeaway from this is that demographically Lunenburg is above median when it comes to, we're very white, we have a much smaller minority populations in Lunenburg, we have smaller low-income populations in Lunenburg, and we have smaller populations of English learners and several other demographic indicators that would point to challenges in performance. And somewhat as a result of that, our performance is a little bit above average. Not tremendously above average, a little bit above average. And that's a concern to me. I wonder how and could and should we be doing better than we're doing? And I share some of Mr. Plant's concerns, particularly around students that are at or above grade level. And I think that that's a theme that I would like to explore in the future. But one area that I think is perhaps our biggest limiter is funding. In Lunenburg, I'm using round numbers here, but we spend about $3,000 less per student than the state average, pretty much across the board at all levels. And so that means for every Lunenburg that is $3,000 below, there's another community that's $3,000 above, or, you know, you can obviously do the math. The point that I'm trying to make here is that we are challenged with funding. And this is a good budget year, and our funding from the state by the governor's proposed budget is indicating about a 0.5% increase in Chapter 70 funding. So we're back to where we were a couple of years ago with respect to hold harmless increases in Chapter 70 funding. By comparison, if you look at the funding in cities like Leominster and Fitchburg that border Lunenburg, their funding increases are in the double digits. And I think that this is going to be the biggest challenge that we're going to have as a direct effect on achievement and performance in the coming years. And I think that it should be really good fodder for conversation with our legislators next week at the upcoming meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Anyone else? Okay. Then next on the docket is the chair's report. I'd like to remind the public that there will be two committee seats on this May's ballot. Mr. Beardmore is running to retain his seat, and there is one other seat open. The town caucus is on March 27th. Please attend if you are interested, and if you have questions, please contact me. In preparation for the March 7th joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Select Board with our legislators, I will be sending our questions ahead to our legislators, hoping to help them to prepare. Representative Scarsdale has requested those, so I will send them to the others. We have been given 10 minutes to speak with our legislators, so I'm obviously not going to be able to bring up everything, so I wanted them to have that list. I will focus on the ESAR funds finishing out, and the School Opportunity Act inflation rate, and unfunded mandates. And if I get that far in 10 minutes, we will have done quite well. So this meeting will begin at 7:00, and it will be here at the Town Hall on March 7th. And I will direct this comment to the public comment at our last meeting. We will have a discussion of the equity audit results and allow for the public to submit questions at a future meeting. We'll talk more about that later in this meeting. As required by DESI, the Tiered Focus Monitoring Review was done last fall. The results can be found on the district website under Special Services Reports. This report measured many facets of our Special Services Department and Civil Rights. It was required by the state. The state requires, and we believe, that all students need to feel welcome and included. Inclusiveness is a necessary component to achievement. This was the message I also received from the MASs Position Paper that was referenced. I will attend the MASc Learning Lunch focusing on the 2023 legislative priorities on this Friday. So that's what I had. And we're going to, I think we can do it tonight, regular meeting session minutes of January 18th, 2023. We have the right players here. So has everyone read those, and are there any comments? Then can I have a motion to have those approved?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 18th meeting.
A second.
And we are all here, so we can do it this way. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those abstaining? And then, as I was not here, the February 15th minutes. Has everyone looked at those? I had a concern with those, and I don't think it was changed, was it? In the, I looked before I came quickly, in the public comment section, Mr. Beardmore's comments were not captured, I believe. So if we can double-check and see if those were put in.
I saw something, but I wasn't here. I don't know if there's more to it.
Oh, under the chair's report?
Yes, under, I'm sorry, under the chair's report.
Yeah, because it was.
My error, because I put.
I had commented about.
Put the comments with the chair's report.
Yep, you're right.
So I think I would like to see those added before we vote on that. Okay. So I did not see any line item transfers, correct? All right. Then the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Our Family School Partnership Initiative program work with the Department of Ed continues. The district team met without facilitation on February 27th. That meeting was dedicated to preparing for our March 6th meeting, which will be facilitated, but we will also be inviting some additional staff to our discussions around the priority areas to work on. Our facilitators have indicated that we, as a district, are progressing further along in this process as compared to other participants in the program this year, which is nice. Nice to hear, good news. Quick update on, you know, changes to the discipline law. We're currently taking a look at some modular curriculum offerings that we can add to our repertoire. Modular units addressing vaping as an example. So students with that infraction might be referred to participate and complete a modular assessment as an opportunity to learn about the practices that they're engaged in, as an interim step in the progressive discipline process prior to a suspension. Network upgrades were executed during the February vacation week. We did have some troubleshooting to do in each of the buildings on Monday. Most of those issues were resolved, and there are a couple of others that SOUZoIT is continuing to address. I wanted to give you a quick update on the school choice seats. We have had two applicants for the five seats that the committee approved for next year's ninth-grade class, therefore no lottery was necessary. Mr. Beardmore already referenced that the Title I report cards are out. They've been sent out to all families by email yesterday, and they're also posted on the website's main page, the curriculum page, the superintendent's page. Also referenced that the TFM report is also posted in all of those locations on the website. The Equity Audit Report, the SR 2 and 3 Grant Update and Amendment are also posted on the main page. All of these documents will remain posted on the main page of the district website through the end of March, and then they would be located with the department pages to which they're affiliated. As a reminder, the high school course selection is underway. This week, teachers are making recommendations on Power School, and that will continue through March 10th. Grade 11 meetings with guidance are occurring on March 7th. Ninth and 10th grade meetings with guidance will be happening on March 9th. All of those will be during the advisory block. March 14th is open registration. Advisories will work on course selection, and March 17th closes the registration. An update on pre-K and kindergarten registrations, there were some evening registration hours scheduled for last evening, which were rescheduled to this evening based on the inclement weather The Early Learning Center and Extended Day Registration, again, just to alert families, that will open on April 3rd. And a few reminders coming up for March. On the 7th is the joint meeting of the School Committee Select Board and Finance Committee at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. On the 14th, the PACSAL, which is our Parents Advisory Council Supporting All Learners, will be meeting, and those meetings are held via Google Meets. That's at 6 o'clock. The link can be found under the PACSAL link, which is located on the Special Education Department page. School Committee will be meeting again on the 15th of March at 6:30, and that's a hybrid meeting from the middle high school. That will be our recommended budget presentation and budget hearing meeting. And on the 16th, the school department budget will be presented at the Finance Committee meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. And now it's time for a student representative. Hi, Sean.
Hi. The primary school had their very first math play, which was a success thanks to primary school staff and high school National Honor Society volunteers. The Turkey Hill Elementary School Schoolwide Spelling Bee took place February 27th. The Lunenburg Middle School will be having a dance scheduled for March 3rd, and the annual DC trip is coming up, which will be May 24th through May 27th. The middle school drama club resumes falling break, and the middle school geography bee was a success. The Lunenburg High School has a sophomore career day that will be held on Tuesday, March 14th, and post-secondary planning for juniors has begun, as well as the SEAL of Literacy Testing, which will take place later this month. The high school boys varsity basketball team have a state basketball tournament game later this week, and a fan bus that will be available for students looking to attend. Lastly, as the tomorrow marks the 50 days for seniors until graduation, and seniors will continue the tradition of putting up a new poster every day until graduation.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, onto old business. We have FY '24 budget update and questions and answers.
So invite Mr. Cassidy to the podium.
My Cassidy, business manager? I'd like to begin tonight by giving the committee and the public an update on the FY '24 budget. This is a brief update, but it, there was impacts to the budget that was submitted The budget that was presented to the school committee in January had an 8% increase to the health insurance. That was, it was the number that we worked with the town on. It came in recently at 6.2. So our insurance, which is a $3 million line item, is going to be reduced. In addition, we had two announced retirements from two teachers at the primary school, and the estimated savings on those two positions is $65,339. So the budget is summarized as this. The total budget, as it stands right now, and we'll get to some unknowns later on, is It is an increase of 2.52% from last year. So it's, I think we're $5,000 off, so right now, and we'll get to that in a little while. This is new information. We haven't discussed this with this town manager yet. I believe since our last meeting, the Chapter 70 funds have been released. As Mr. Beardmore indicated, we're back to normal. I rounded up, Mr. Beardmore, it was 5.5%, I added, you know, 0.6% still. It's not a drastic increase. It's about $48,000 increase from last year's allotment from the state. Just in comparison, we got an 11.5% increase last year. And there was a number of reasons for that, as we went into a higher category of need. So we still have some unknowns. Right now, there's no known DESI COVID grants expected, but we're hopeful that some school-related grants will be announced, and very likely there'll be competitive grants and not entitlements. There will be an announcement from the Department of Public Health regarding their entitlement grants, so hopefully at the next committee meeting, I'll have an update. They're potentially talking about extending the current grants that we do have into the following school year. Circuit Breaker is still expected to cover 65% of the costs, hopefully including some out-of-district transportation. However, the governor's budget had some details today that there's a 15% increase to the total Circuit Breaker amount statewide, but there's no details on how that's going to be allocated. So hopefully, that'll, in some way or another, that'll impact Lunenburg. I'm not really sure. We'll have that information by the next school committee meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
What's Circuit Breaker?
Circuit Breaker is a state reimbursement program for out-of-district tuition. So there, the district has to spend so much per student, and over and above that, the state will reimburse a percentage of what we spend. Now, right now, they're only reimbursing tuition. We're hoping that if there's enough money, that they'll reimburse out-of-district transportation as well. So that's, there's a process internally within the Student Services Office that they submit information to the state on what we spend, and then we get that money into a revolving account. That revolving account, that money is used to offset our out-of-district costs in our local budget.
If, like, a kid for some reason has to go to a school in another district, the Circuit Breaker compensates us for his tuition, but not his transportation yet?
Right, correct, right now.
Special education placement.
Got it.
Thank you for asking.
And I think what's holding, I'm not going to belabor it, I think one of the things that had been holding back the state from reimbursing out-of-district transportation is the budget. They just don't have enough money. They do transportation, excuse me, tuition first, they don't have money for transportation.
Can I ask a somewhat technical question here? But given that it may be some time before we have these Circuit Breaker numbers, and there's other federal and state grants that you're making a level-funded assumption, when those numbers inevitably change, do the funds come directly to the district, or do they come through the town? And what I'm leading to is, is we pass our budget, the town meeting passes a budget with a certain amount of money from the town to fund the schools. Does a change to a grant affect our funding in the schools, or does it change the checkbook to the town?
The money comes straight to the schools as a reimbursement into a revolving account, and we use local funds, and we use Circuit Breaker to support out-of-district transportation.
Okay, so that's specific for Circuit Breaker. I appreciate that.
Yes.
A different grant, let's say a Title I grant, for example, is that more or less the same thing, or is that accounted for differently?
That's an entitlement grant that goes through DESI, and that is, goes straight to the district. The town sets up accounts.
Okay. But it goes to the district, not the town?
Yes.
Okay.
We are, we are the, we are the recipient, that's a grant term. Technically, we are a sub-recipient, because it comes from the federal government to the state, to the district, but we are recipient, a direct recipient from DESI.
Okay. At some point, offline, I'd like to discuss some of this accounting review, and maybe the finance director as well. I just, I want to really understand, in particular, the revenue line as it comes through the warrant to town meeting, to the department, particularly for some of these things that you just don't know until after the budget is approved.
Federal and state grants, we're projecting a level funding. There is absolutely, I've heard no news on the status of our title grants, our 240 grants, except level funding. I did want to share some information that you may already know, but I think it's important because it does have an impact on students. But the governor's budget, as it stands right now, does not support the free school lunch program. So, however, this is from the business officials. So, however, this is from the business officials group. There is a supplemental funding source, 65 million FY '23 supplemental is currently making its way through the legislation with the House voting on it today. So there, there is some hope that that might be, might be funded in some way. I, I'm not sure if 65 million will cover that, so it may offset just some of our operating expenses. So I'll, I'll provide an update as, as I get that information. That has no bearing on the budget that we're talking about. Once again, that's another revolving account. And, but I think that was pretty important information to share for parents and students. One more slide. We're back to the next step slide. So we're at the question and answer session tonight. The next step is two weeks from tonight will be the final recommended budget from the superintendent to the school committee. And we encourage people to participate, either virtually or in person. The budget will be, there is a, the January budget is posted. As soon as the, the final recommended budget is, is done, we'll, we'll, we'll post it. Ideally, it'll be posted on Friday, no later than Monday morning.
Friday of next week or this?
Friday of next week.
Okay. And
Seventeenth.
With the changes that you've indicated today, will we receive an update to the line item budget or was that, will that come next week?
That, that'll be reflected in the budget on March 17th. So now it's, question and answers.
All righty. Are there any questions about the budget from the committee?
I just have a comment and, and I do have a, I want an additional question, which is purely procedural. So just in full transparency, I had mentioned at the last meeting that we had had a meeting planned with Souzer IT to talk about my concerns of the IT budget specifically related to security. That meeting did occur. The superintendent, the chair, and the business manager and myself participated in that. I think it was a productive meeting, but there are some action items that the superintendent and the business manager have, are taking. We had a quick status call on this today and they updated me, and I believe that there will be some issues addressed in a couple of weeks when we, when we come back to this. My question is, have you received any communication from the finance committee relative to their request in terms of how the budget is presented on the 16th or 15th or whenever that is?
We have. Although I, I must admit, as communications go back and forth, I get a little bit more foggy on what they are actually expecting. But as per the original request earlier this year, we're going to focus more on breakdown of the budget and how the budget's allocated versus the typical repeat of the, the final budget presentation that we give to the school committee. We can pull out some pertinent context information scaled back and we can pull in some of the slides that we'll end up showing to the finance committee into our presentation to this body the night before that, so.
Okay.
If I could add to that, we, I started dissecting some of the information that they were requesting. So I, I do have right in front of me. Number one, they were looking for an overview of current fiscal year, operations to date, successes, gaps, priorities. An overview of the FY '24 request, including line item details. Review of spending through January 2023. So we've already have that information. Any expected transfers and just an update on the other line items. The superintendent and I were thinking about some other information we'd like to provide a little bit different from maybe more geared toward finance. Our goal is to provide that information to the school committee via a shared file or folder, not present it, but take some of that information included in the, the March 15th presentation, along with some of the other educational stuff that might not be relevant to the finance committee. So it'll be kind of a, a mix and match of what we present to the finance committee. Some information, some new information that will be shared with the school committee as well as just the regular reporting out of, of stuff.
Okay.
And we also discussed providing them the entire slide deck from our presentation to the school committee, just as background.
Yep. So the, some, just for my fellow members who may not be read into what happens at finance committee meetings, and I was on the finance committee when this conversation started, there was some feedback from members of the finance committee that their preference would be to spend less time, and I'm paraphrasing, but less time on the qualitative and more time on the quantitative. And, and they communicated that through a, a communication, a letter that they, that they put together. So unlike past years, my expectation is, is that the presentation that we see on the 14th, 15th will not be precisely the same as what's presented to the finance committee on the 16th.
Right.
But any information will be shared with the school committee first. May I just add one thing?
Of course.
Mr. Beardmore mentioned security in our system. That 2.52% increase that we're looking for, I, I want to add an unknown, which is we are exploring what that cost will be. So that may end up going up based upon what that number looks like. I can't imagine it's going to go up to 3%. I think it'll be percentage, very small percentage points. But that's an unknown that I didn't add to that presentation because I was going to report out it, out on it, but be prepared that that, the budget will address that, that cost.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the committee with questions? Anyone in the public with questions? Anybody's hand up?
Not yet. I don't see any.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Just have one more procedural question.
Okay.
We have a public hearing in two weeks. Is that going to be, do we normally advertise the school committee public hearings?
By policy, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So our next topic is the equity audit report. I'd like to give the committee and the community some additional time to submit questions regarding the audit. My suggestion is how we handle all of this is to have all stakeholders, be that staff, be that parents, be that community members, be that us, whoever, all stakeholders submit any questions to LPS or
Right. That information went out in the March newsletters to families as well as the March newsletter that goes to staff as well, that they've been encouraged, once again, to let their voice be heard and submit any questions, concerns, or feedback in general.
So, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to have all those questions by the 22nd of March, and that way there will be sufficient time to organize them, make sure we can thoroughly get to the answers, to have someone come up and ask a question that night. We may not know the answer. It, it's probably not the best thing. So we'll have ample time to get all our answers and present a frequently asked question-type session, but we will include the answers to everybody's questions. And my anticipated date on that, with the budget hearing being our next meeting, would be the April 5th meeting. That that would give everybody enough time to get their questions in, get, and get our staff, and if we need the staff from the audit itself, involved, to get them involved. I had some questions I did submit and they were answered very completely. So I want to give them time to do that for everybody. And that way, that April 5th meeting, that will be a major portion of the meeting discussing those questions that people have about the audit. And then I would surmise that we would go with the next meeting on next steps
Mm-hmm.
After we have time to look at the answers to those questions. So unless anybody has any better ideas, then I think that's the way we are going to approach it.
Just so people know, who do they submit questions to?
You can send it to the, at lunenburgschools.net or directly to me by email. And again, that information with the email addresses included was at the very beginning of the newsletter that went out to families this evening, as well as the different newsletter that went out to staff as well.
And if anyone is not able to email a question, this gives ample time for a snail mail question to reach your office.
Or a phone call.
Or a phone call. There we go. Because we don't want to miss anyone. Okay?
I'm going to post that on the Facebook thing.
I think that would be a good thing to do. All right? And also post where they can find the audit itself.
Yeah.
Okay. So going on, first read of policies. There's four of them, and I don't see controversial things in these policies. Thoughts from people, if we should waive these first readings and then just read them in their entirety? Derek, do you have questions?
So, I have a question
Sure.
Pertaining to the, the one that's almost entirely, or is entirely new, the Budget Transfer Authority
Mm-hmm.
Policy.
Yep.
And the question pertains to how we're going to do line item transfers. And the policy, as it's written, refers to the fact that we do line item transfers periodically. My words, not, not in the, but then it says, "All requests for transfers between cost centers as approved during the annual budget deliberation must be submitted to the school committee for approval as part of the school business manager's quarterly report at the business meetings of the school committee." My read of that is that we're only doing line item transfers quarterly.
And I looked at that too, and I'm going to tell you this. I understand Tony wondering what to do with the educationees. I had no idea what a cost center was. So I had to go through all kinds of stuff.
I asked that at the budget meeting.
So, so I think most, I could be wrong and please correct me, Mr. Cassidy. Most of the transfers that do come up exist within a cost center. Is that correct? You try to transfer between, like friends? Like, that's, I did a lot of digging, but as you can see, I did not escape with any kind of financial language.
We do present the local budget in, in cost center. Let me see if I can. Okay, this is a little bit more information, this is all, all the guts of the, of my file, but the 20, if you can see the, the 2210, the 22, the 235, 235, those are cost centers. Those are DESI cost centers.
Okay, and they come from DESI, what the cost centers are. So when you typically make a transfer, like the elementary school needs more whiteboards or interactive boards, and so they are taking from their textbook account and put, does that change the cost center?
It doesn't change the cost, it, it, it changes the amount that the school committee budgeted in that cost center.
So it would not be between cost centers? It is within a cost center? Do you see what I'm saying? Because this, this policy says transfers of funds between cost centers could only be done quarterly.
So, so, we may be splitting, splitting hairs here, but you have cost centers like what Mr. Cassidy just cited, 2305, 2304, but then we have sublines under those cost centers that typically, my observation of Mr. Cassidy's budget transfers, is that he does try to keep the transfers within the major heading, the major cost center. Sometimes that's the case, usually that's the case, sometimes it's not, depending upon the nature of the transfer. End of the year, we tend to move, I think, more between cost centers. My concern is not really whether it's in a major line cost center or not. My concern is what expectations are we setting in terms of the cadence or frequency of line item transfers? Line items, cost center, not cost center, is really kind of irrelevant to me. I understand the importance of keeping them like, so within the primary school building from supplies to whiteboards or something like that. Like, I understand the reasoning for that, but as a school committee, I think that if, if we want to contain this to a quarterly activity or not, and, and my, my thinking is, I don't really see a need to do that, then this policy may be, may be overkill. You know, I mean, it may be, it, it may be just appropriate to say, in line with our authority as, as outlined by state statute, which is very specific in terms of what our authorities are in the budget, we retain the ability to transfer between cost centers in an approved budget at a meeting so long as it's on an agenda or something like that, right? Like, in my mind, this is a little bit too prescriptive around attaching the quarterly, attaching line item transfers to quarterly updates.
Was the intent of this to change the practice?
So this came to be because this was one of those MAS C policy recommendations. But we certainly don't, just because we, we got the recommendation with this language doesn't necessarily mean that we need to adopt it.
I don't see any reason to change the practice unless there was a problem. And that's why I wondered if the transfers were, because this is dealing with between cost center. I didn't know if that made a difference.
In my mind, it's splitting hairs, but I, Mr. Cassidy or the superintendent might have a different opinion between cost center and line item. But I, I, and when I first read it, that didn't even occur to me. In my mind, cost center was synonymous with line item. And I, I'm also a little bit concerned about how this might be interpreted.
Mr. Cassidy, is this going to tie your hands? Is, is the question really, is this going to cause a problem, this policy? Hold things up?
You know, this, this year, we, and in years past, there's usually a gigantic transfer in the beginning of November, when I try to reconcile all the new hires and where the power is landing. paras are landing. We did that this year. And then about a month later, there was still new, there were still new hires and still new parrot. So I did it again. It's not very typical. I usually just go in one fell swoop in November. And then for, you know, as the school spends down their school-based budgets, they find surpluses and they want to spend down all the money and they come in for transfers. That holds up purchasing. That's what that does for the school. So that is, that is tying their hands a bit.
I would recommend that we.
You know, my goal is not to have a transfer at every meeting.
Oh, sure, sure.
So is mine. So the other, the other thing that I think we should consider as a committee, and again, I apologize, I wasn't aware that this was being brought up in the subcommittee and I had some thoughts in just reading it, is, you know, I think line item transfers are fine over the course of the year as they ebb and flow. We've got a standard practice of putting line item transfers on our agendas. But the public doesn't necessarily know what is going to be proposed in line item transfer until the words come out of Mr. Cassidy's mouth. And I think if we're going to consider how we're doing transfers, one thing we may want to consider is stipulating that in an agenda or referencing the proposed transfer in advance of a meeting.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
I appreciate the desire for transparency, but sometimes people become confused in a blizzard of information. And I think that while there are some large line item transfers that we approve, some of these are like $40 or $600. And having to detail that on the agenda ahead of time will be a lot of work. It will make the agenda more daunting. It will make our meetings, which are already long, longer. And I don't know how much value will be received by the community. I don't think that there are people out there that are eagerly anticipating the release of our line item budget statements for a $43 transfer from the primary school art department for blue paint to purple paint. Like, I just think that, you know, having to do that is, you know, pointless. So I would prefer to streamline the budget process and make sure that the people that have to make decisions like Mr. Cassidy are empowered to do so without laborious obligations to present every single item. It's just too much. I mean, even some of them, you know, like, Mr. Cassidy does a really good job because he color codes the transfers, so I can just see like, green goes to red, you know, or whatever it is. But I feel like, you know, it took me 20 minutes of Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy explaining what a cost center was in the policy meeting for me to understand it. And I just, you know, I don't think that going deeper than that would provide any sort of meaningful information to people. I mean, I'm all for transparency, but like, I don't think anybody cares or wants to know what, down to that granular level. Maybe except for Peter. I mean, I don't know. I personally think it's fine and it just makes it longer.
Well, I guess, you know, I think we have a clear difference of opinion on this. I think that there is a, there is a large swath of the public who thinks that the budget is done behind a screen and that it isn't worth trying to pay attention because it's just too hard. And I count myself as being one of those people. And I've stood at public comment, as I referenced at the last meeting, I spent a fair amount of time at that podium myself, saying, why doesn't the public have this information in advance? And the fact that that information is not available in advance only serves to perpetuate that opinion. And not that a $40 transfer from A to B is substantive. It isn't. But as soon as you do a $40 transfer, you're going to do a $400 transfer and you're going to do a $40,000 transfer, which we have done, by the way, within the last several months as we've moved paras from one building to the next. And those budgets are reflected in our annual budget, which we are about to talk about in two weeks. So either we're going to have transparency at the beginning and continue that transparency throughout the year as we're spending the money, or we're not. And right now, I think we're doing it inconsistently.
Mr. Leyman?
Thank you. I would, I would say that transparency is definitely important. I know the concern with the agenda is that we want to keep it to one page, so I wouldn't want to be very detailed in all of the line item transfers on the agenda. But I could see maybe either a link or a, even if it's just in our meetings, to say, okay, you can find these line item transfers on the business manager's website portion of the Lunenburg Schools website and post them as efficiently and readily as they become available.
I would support that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's fine.
So.
I agree with transparency, but also I don't want Mr. Cassidy to come overloaded with, hey, we have questions, maybe bring your questions to this meeting as opposed to, hey, why don't you email Mr. Cassidy? You have all these community members. I just.
Fair point as well.
Yeah. So maybe like, here's the information. We would welcome your opinions at the meetings, not to offer, hey, here's my email, have fun. Like, I just don't want to see him overworked either.
And I think if it's, if it's available before the meeting, people can actually see it and then go to public comment and make those public comments before and not after the transfers actually already happened.
Okay. So this policy, personally, I don't see a reason to tie transfers into quarters. And I would rather be able to make a transfer in a timely manner so that people can purchase what they need to purchase. So I think maybe we need another run at this one.
I agree. The other ones, the other three in the first read I was fine with, but this one in particular just kind of struck me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's what we'll do then. So that takes care of first reads.
So do we want to make a motion?
Waive the first read for the first three. Somebody want to make a motion to do so? Oh, did you make a motion? I didn't.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to specify?
We would need to make a motion to.
Waive first reading of the items listed in the agenda for first reading.
Except for.
For 3105.
Yes.
3105. All right, do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, that's what we'll do then. The second read, are we going to waive the second read on transportation and concession stand as we read it in full the last time? Mr. Beadmore?
Did we receive an opinion on the question that I asked at the last meeting pertaining to the waiver of rights by, you know, for transportation?
They did some research and there is no case law to base an opinion on. So there is no official opinion relative to that question.
I think we are inviting a lawsuit.
I think if that is the case, I, what, that does sound a little dangerous to me as well, but what do I know? So we're going to look at our legal expert, who is not our attorney and who does not practice law in the state.
Yes. I will tell you, I, you know, like, virtually every area of the law functions on the premise that people can waive their rights if they choose to do so. And here, if they choose not to act, they're waiving their rights. But since every dime that we would pay our lawyer in a lawsuit is a dime that does not go to education, I think that it may be worthwhile to think through it and expand the scope of the search. If there are other schools or other school districts where, outside the state of Massachusetts, where this kind of language has been useful. I mean, the reality is, and this is mindful of what Mr. Plant said and what other people have said, like, the, we're going to try to bus everybody. And normally, there's no one who wants to be bussed that's left out. But because the bus providers don't actually exist in competition with each other, and the one that we have here is basically the only one that we would get, and we don't even know if they would have extra bus capacity, we have to know by a certain period of time. And if we use a cutoff mechanism like a waiver, we accomplish that goal, which is, you know, beneficial to everybody. But again, every penny we spend paying our attorneys is a penny we don't spend educating our kids. So, you know, I don't know if we should try to figure out if there's a, I mean, it's not that difficult to do a multi-state search. So I don't want to tax our attorney, but I think that, you know, if we could have a mechanism that makes it work, we should try it.
I have to tell you, if there isn't relevant case law in Massachusetts, I'm not sure that it's worth the effort. And the other problem that I have here is, if our attorneys had come back and said specifically a policy from the school committee that states that if you go past a certain time and not taking action represents an individual waiving their right, then I would say, okay, fine. But as a school committee member who is going to vote for a policy, that would say, okay, my policy on the school committee would have the effect of waiving a right for a parent or taxpayer with no legal precedence in the state of Massachusetts to do so, I can tell you, I am a definite no on that. And I'm not sure that case law outside of the state would have any bearing on my decision. Because the state law in Massachusetts is very specific around student busing and how that relates to the state of Iowa. You know, there's all going, there's going to be all kinds of intricacies that is going to make our hair hurt.
So I think the legal jeopardy comes not for a parent case where a parent submits past a deadline and lives a half mile from the school versus the parent who submits past the deadline and lives two or more miles away.
Yep.
Because by law, they would be entitled to the bus.
Right.
Whereas the language around, you've waived your right and there's nothing that trumps that, i.e. law saying that you are legally entitled to be transported. I think that there's a very small exemption here that could follow down the path of a legal challenge. And that's for any student who lives more than two miles.
Absolutely.
Did Melissa have any advice about the risk, right? Because like, every legal decision you make involves a risk. Like, if we wait for a policy that has no legal risk, then we will have no policy. So, you know, oftentimes, a lawyer can apprise us on, well, you know, maybe not in busing, but in, you know, in the special education context, they had something similar and it didn't work or it did work. I'm just, you know, like, I think that we don't have a whole lot of options. We don't have practical solutions because of the busing, the lack of competition among busing companies, and our busing companies essentially hard cap on how many buses we can get. So, you know, if, if there is a risk, but it's a small risk, it might be worth taking. The other thing is, we have to contemplate, like, what would that lawsuit look like, right? Because if you violate the law, you don't automatically get dollars, right? You only violate, you only get dollars if you can prove damages in a civil suit. So what are the damages? And I don't know how to calculate that, especially given the status of Massachusetts along the fact that I'm.
The risk is it's going to upend our busing situation and change the, change the calculus of our buses and affect our operations. That's the risk that I'm far more concerned about. The, the other thing is, is that the risk isn't, is not something that I think could be entirely calculated by a lawyer, because you would have to live in the community of Lunenburg to understand the recent history, which is, we had a very emotional event this past August pertaining to busing, and now we are contemplating a substantial change in the way we do this, which means that, which we will have to effectively communicate, which, by the way, we're already bumping up against affecting deadlines. You know, like, I mean, the fact, the likelihood of this thing going haywire is probably a little bit higher than you would think if you had been doing the same thing for the previous 10 years.
There could just be a managerial solution too.
Right.
Which is, we submit to the bus company a roster of all students up through sixth grade who live two plus miles or more and account for them being placed on the bus. Then if you have other families who don't meet that threshold of the law and entitlement to the transportation, if they don't meet the deadline, they don't meet the deadline and they won't be placed on the bus.
But then that's essentially the same thing as a waiver.
It's essentially what we've done all along and it has the, it has a negative effect on the kids who live closer who have the safety concerns and wouldn't otherwise get the seats. We'd be back to where we started.
Again, I mean, the whole intent here really is to try to capture language that gets us to a place of partnership with families. For them to indicate to us the need in a timely enough manner that we can work with the bus company and get everybody placed. And if we've had too many requests, be able to notify people that based on the date and timestamp, there isn't enough space available, there is no seat, you're on a wait list, again, in a timely way for the benefit of the families. That's my, my take on this. We're trying to capture some language that just, we really need families to partner with us on this so that it can be an efficient operation and everybody has the information that they need in a timely enough manner so that they can plan accordingly. That's us, that's the bus company, that's families. I mean, that's essentially what we're trying to capture here.
I would, my preference, and I'd be interested in your opinion on this, Mr. Schoenbrini, is instead of that clause, that sentence that says, you're given a failure to do so, you waive your right. If there's a failure to do so, there's an opportu, there's a, there's a way to adjudicate it. In other words, you could bring to the superintendent or the school committee or somebody extenuating circumstances where, where a judgment could be made based upon those circumstances combined with available resources. But at least give some level of flexibility or elasticity to this that gives us an escape hatch, I guess, is what I'm getting to.
I mean, I, I think.
But isn't that covered?
Isn't that there? Emergency bus applications in the event of a newly arising condition.
But the new, that there, this is not a newly arising condition. This is somebody that didn't fill out the form.
At what point do we sit back? I think the biggest thing that is frustrating in this is that families are saying, well, we've not done this in the past. Well, that doesn't mean that we can't create a policy now to more efficiently run this program going forward. So I think people have to get over the stigma out there that this is a terrible thing. School committee is trying to ruin our lives by having us submit paperwork on a deadline, God forbid. We're just trying to get, like, as Dr. Burnham said, I don't know.
I'm on your side of this. Like, I agree with you, but I've been around the block a few times and I know that any change, regardless of how benign it is, is going to create some consternation. It's just a, you know.
And I, I have not been, I understand that we have to do something. I have not been a fan of the wave the right thing, but I, it was, nobody came up with a better idea. So I take you. How do you get people to turn in the paperwork? It will make everybody's life easier, but short of knocking on doors and handing them paperwork, saying, please, could you just fill this out now? I don't know how to get people to turn in the paperwork.
We can't even get 100% compliance with, with families completing the emergency forms. We still don't have 100%. And it's March. Emergency forms.
I don't know how you do this. We have to come up with something. And I, I think putting everybody on a bus, K to six, outside of two mi, I'm sorry, six to 12, outside of two miles, maybe, because that's what we are, we have to do, may be the way to do it, but then some people who live closer are going to, you're going to end up with the same problem in August. And that's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to families, it's not fair to the bus company, it's not fair to the staff, it's not, I don't, I don't know what you do to get people. I don't, I don't know what you do to get people to do this on time. Except maybe, try it. And just say, "We mean it, we are not gonna back down, we mean it." But then, as Peter pointed out at a few meetings ago, then you're punishing the child for the parent that can't get their act together. And that's not fair either. I really don't know what to do with all of this.
Can we take the word "waiver" out and just say, shall be interpreted that busing is not needed? Will that solve the waiver issue of, we're not using that language?
Well, that'll solve the legal issue. Uh, Mr. Scullumbrini?
Hi, dear.
I'm sorry, Mr. Layton, I'm sorry.
So, I am typically not a, a fan of fees. Um, and I had thought about fees at the beginning of this because you gotta find a way to get people to actually wanna say they wanna take the bus, even if it was the smallest fee. But I think maybe we can connect that to the failure to submit a bus application, where if they fail to submit a bus application before a deadline, then they would...
If they come in after...
If they come in late, then they would have to pay a fee for the bus. And that way, they're having an effort to fill out the form.
Assuming that there's space available.
Assuming there's, see, that's the problem.
Yeah, it's motivation to fill out a form.
What if we did something instead of a waiver? Where we said, you know, "If you get your data, you get your application in by this date, you will, you know, you'll get a bus seat. Any applications after that date, you'll get a bus seat as soon as practical." And that's it. You know, so that they understand that one is a guarantee and one is, "You'll get it when we can get it to you." And, you know, like, that doesn't fix the problem for Liz, 'cause she, you know, she'll still run herself ragged to get them a bus seat, but at least it's not as harsh as a waiver. It's not saying no, but it is giving you an incentive to get it in. You know, like, I think back to the, uh, um, the mother who has three kids, and she spoke twice, and they live on Mass Ave. And it's just not safe for her kids to walk. That lady will get it in. Like, I guarantee that lady will get it in. She was, you know, bound and determined, it was a change, it happened quick. The, i- if, if you're at all a planner, and you have a guarantee versus like, you get it when you get it, you're gonna take the guarantee. And for the people who, you're gonna get it when you get it, it's not saying no, but it also isn't, you know, rewarding them for not paying attention. And I think that, you know, like, unfortunately, we, we can't do anything better than that. I'm not sure how much that changes it from what it is now, but at least it doesn't have the harsh consequence of a waiver. The other thing is, Peter's idea of like, giving them a hearing, I think that that would solve a lot of the, again, not a, the school district's lawyer, but traditionally, there are, you know, whenever you have a right, you have a, a, an attachment of, of due process that includes a hearing. If we give them a hearing, maybe that fixes the legal problem, but it exponentially multiplies the workload for whoever, like...
It doesn't really change anything.
Yeah, I mean, it just makes it...
No.
How many came in late?
Yeah, I was just thinking, just rewording this. Failure to submit a bus application before May 1st will not guarantee a bus for the first two weeks, or the first three weeks, or something like that.
I'm inclined to agree with the way you just proposed it, Mrs. Scullumbrini. I, I think that by separating a guarantee from a, we're oversubscribed, and now it's first come, first served, or something along those lines, where now you're in line.
Yeah.
We're not denying it, but you're in line. And operationally, we'd have to figure out, like, at some point, we have to lock in the routes, and we can't change the routes, and those...
It has to be stopped somewhere.
You know, yeah, I, I agree with that, but I, but I do think that that... There, there's a, there's a difference between a denial and a queue. Right? You know? And I, I think that there could be a way of, th- there's, there's a compromise here that I think we can, that we can get to where we can say, "You're, you're, you're late, and we don't have a way to accommodate you, but you're in the queue."
So that, that's essentially what we've been doing for several years at this point with COVID. And, um, in all, in all honesty, people are not patient. We, we can say, I, I can't, "Well, when can you get it?" Because this is inconvenient for me. I, I need a solution faster than two weeks from now. Uh, that, people just are not patient.
What if we...
And it's time-consuming, when people are not patient.
What if we put in language that said, you know, "If you get it in by a certain date, you have a guarantee. If you get it in after that, we will not be able to accommodate you for X number of days or months." So that that gives Liz time, and it also tells them so that they're not like calling, "What about today? What about today? What about today?"
They're, they're still gonna call. I, I, I can ask, Liz is on this meeting, I can ask her to weigh in, but that is our lived experience over the last multiple years.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
No.
Because for the first three-plus weeks of school, it's all hands on deck about getting people on a bus, and it consumes my office literally all day. All day. Um, I'll turn it over to, to, to Liz to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham and the school committee. And this is a very difficult subject, because any way that you go, you have, um, caveats with it. Um, I do agree with a lot of what you're saying. I had thought, uh, we had run it by legal about a late reg- registration fee as well. And she did say that we were within our purview to do something like that, if that's the route that we were going to go. Um, we've tried all different scenarios. But the scenario, like Dr. Burnham said, that we're doing now, basically is to try to guarantee as many people busing, um, if they get their applications in on time. Um, if they did not, they basically were put on a waitlist, and, and I would work with the bus company, um, directly to get them on as fast as possible. And, um, it, it is extremely time-consuming. Um, I will certainly do that if that's what you decide to do, but it definitely has its challenges as well.
Well, I have a thought. I don't know if it's legitimate, or if it can be done because of confidentiality. But is there a way we could, without it being outrageously expensive, after the deadline, if, I think we had said May 1st deadline, something like that, we could get someone in to make phone calls? Just hire somebody for a week to make phone calls and say, "Is your kid riding the bus or not?" I mean, people don't wanna turn in the form, people don't wanna, "Are you riding the bus or not?" Here, we have somebody to chase people for a week. Would that work?
So my administrators and secretaries at the school, um, had been doing that for several weeks, chasing after the emergency forms, where even two, two and a half, three months into school, a significant portion of families had not returned the emergency form. And then there were calls made, and a second call made, so on and so forth. It becomes a real challenge. Essentially, the staff become the personal secretaries to the families to get done what they need to get done, so that we have the information that we need to get things done a- and to be able to operate in a safe manner. You know, the emergency forms just being a significant example of the challenge that we face trying to get forms completed. I mean, think about the bus form in comparison to an emergency form, that if something happens to your child during the day, or there's an emergency at school, and we have to evacuate, we, we need to know, who, who are the contacts? I, does your child have any medical issues that we need to know about? We can't get that information back.
Do they, are they able to talk to the parent, and then the parent just doesn't turn it in?
I'd have to follow up with them to find out what their experience has been.
If you could get someone on the phone and just say yes or no? I don't know. I, I'm out of ideas on this one.
In the interest of trying to close the conversation at some point tonight, we're, we're in a difficult situation here, because the policy as written is intended to be implemented on the 1st of April. And we are not in agreement on the 1st of March. So, in, in the interest of expediting this, I've offered a couple of compromises here. One is language to soften the waiver of rights and get to a waiting list, you know, or a queue. Another, to be honest with you, as you first said it, not really comfortable with the fee idea, I'm less comfortable with that than the, than the queue. But if we're within our legal, uh, uh, confines, to do something like that, I would consider that as well. Um, but given the information that we have tonight, we have a second reading that I feel like I'm a clear no on.
No, we're not ready to...
And I, I'm just, I'm really worried about the calendar now, given the, the circumstance. You know, maybe we have to back this thing off two weeks or something, but, but I think we need to think about what, what are some practical avenues to get, getting this thing done.
Fine.
I would just add that we talked about this before too, that we can add a, a special meeting just for reading the policies too. So I'm not too worried about the timeline at this point, but I am concerned about the language.
What if we did this? What if at, either the next policy meeting, which is in two days?
Mm-hmm.
So probably not then. But the one after that, which is in nine days, what if we have Melissa, the attorney, at the meeting, and we run all these things by her? So that before the meeting, we'll give her like, "Here is the issue, here are the solutions. Can you do some legal research and figure out which of these work?" And then have her come to the policy subcommittee meeting and figure out what are those, you know, like, she could run it down. And then we could then bring it back with multiple variants with each one of her assessments, and say, you know, to the, the entire school committee, "Which do you like of these?", and then make that the policy. Yeah. That way, we don't have to keep going back and forth. So we'll write five or however many different suggestions we have on the table, three or five different policies. Ask her to research the legality of each of them, and then be ready to go. And that way, we don't have to wait.
I, I think that's much more expeditious than trying to figure it out sitting here.
Yeah, we're just not gonna be able to do that. Plus, I can't get Lexus to work, so...
Um, okay then. So, we are not going to second read the transportation policy. We are going to waive the second reading of the concession stand policy?
Yes.
Is that correct? Could I have a motion to do so?
Make a motion to waive the reading of 3701.03.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, um, third read, policies 3701.01 and 3701.202. Could I have someone read those?
Can I read one here or the other?
Sure.
All right. Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, food service is, food services? Can I speak? Food service 3700, school breakfast slash lunch program 3701, insufficient funds 3701.01. It is the philosophy of the Lunenburg Public Schools that well-nourished students are more engaged, productive students. The Lunenburg Public Schools considers payment of school lunch fees the responsibility of parent, of students' parents slash guardians. School lunch is made available to all students at the daily meal rate established by the school committee, or at a reduced rate, or no cost for students who meet the National School Lunch Free Reduced Lunch Eligibility, Eligibility Guidelines. Notification of insufficient funds. When a student's lunch balance reaches negative $12, parents or guardians will be contracted by school personnel to inform them that they must provide their child with a lunch and/or resolve their unpaid school lunch account balance. Two, information and application forms for free and reduced lunch are available at the district's website, www.lunenburgschools.net. Three, if a student is without lunch or lunch money on a regular basis, the building administrator or designated will investigate the situation and take further action as needed, including encouraging parents to apply for free and reduced lunch and/or making referrals to outside agencies or filing a 51A. Four, parents or guardians will be expected to pay unpaid balances upon receipt of notification. Five, parents or guardians who fail to satisfy negative balances within 30 days of initial electronic notification will be mailed a letter via the U.S. Postal Service to the home address on file. Six, parents or guardians are responsible for any negative balances incurred prior to meeting eligibility for free or reduced lunch status. Seven, lunch accounts with negative balances for 90 days that reflect no payment effort will be turned over to an outside collection agency. Adopted, uh, 91714, updated and approved 5317, revised and approved 12220.
All right. Any comments about the insufficient funds? Seeing no comments, then why don't we read the other one, and we can pass them in one fell swoop?
Fiscal management and non-instructional operations 3000, food services 3700, Lunenburg food services 3701, meal charging policy 3701.02. The Lunenburg lunch program is committed to providing students with healthy and nutritious meals while also maintaining financial integrity of the meal program and minimizing any impact on students with meal charges. Unpaid meal charges place a large burden on the school districts as the lunch program is a self-supporting entity within the district. The purpose of this policy is to ensure compliance with federal reporting requirements of the United States Department of Agricultural Children Nutrition Program, as well as provide cohesive plan for oversight and accountability. It is understandable that there will be incurred meal debt. This policy will detail the maximum amount of negative balance students will be allowed, and the collection of outstanding account balances. Meal charges and balances. Students will pay for meals at their regular rate, approved by the school committee in accordance with the meal status, paid, reduced, or free each day. Families are encouraged to deposit funds for meals in student accounts before the balance reaches zero to avoid negative balances. When the account enters the negative, when the account enters the negative, students are given verbal notification. Students will be allowed to charge full reimbursable meals. When student accounts reach the insufficient fund status, parents and guardians will be informed by phone and email. For more information regarding insufficient funds policies, policy, families can locate the policy on the Lunenburg Public School Food Services webpage. If there is a financial hardship, the parent or guardian should contact the food service director to discuss payment options. Students with insufficient funds are not permitted to purchase in al- purchase à la carte items, including but not limited to second meals, snacks, ice cream, or additional beverages. Students will still be allowed to take a meal, a full reimbursable meal. Anything less is considered à la carte. The meal will continue to be charged to the account at the standard rate based on meal status. More information regarding school meals or nutritional guidelines can be found on the Lunenburg Public School Food Services webpage. Payment. Parent guardian is responsible for the, uh, for payment to the food services program and any meal charges incurred. If parent guardians have issues with student purchases, they should contact the food services for assistance. Parent guardians may pay for meals in advance. Payment options: cash, check, written to the town of Lunenburg, or the use, or use the, use the online payment center, which can be accessed on the Lunenburg Public Schools webpage. Students paying with cash or check will be, will use payment boxes located in or near school offices, with the exception of the primary school, given the age of this group. Parents are encouraged to send payments in student folders. All cash or check payments should, uh, sent in should be in an envelope clearly marked with the student's full name and the student ID number. Envelopes are available in the front office of each school. Any remaining funds, whether positive or negative, will carry over each school year. All school cafeterias have a computerized point-of-sale system that maintains records of all monies deposited and spent for each student, and those records are available to parent guardians by setting up an account in Power School. Power School has low-balance email alert, uh, alert. Parent guardians are encouraged to use this feature. Checks returned for insuff- non-sufficient funds. When a check is returned to the treasurer's office for non-sufficient funds, a letter will be sent in, to inform the parents from the treasurer. The payment for not, uh, for the non-sufficient funds check must be in the form of cash, cashier's check. must be in the form of cash, cashier's check, or money order. Payments must be received within 10 days of the date of the letter. Insufficient payment will be reversed from the student's lunch account until notified that the repayment has been received. Refunds. Student, withdrawn students. For any student who is withdrawn, a written request for a refund of any money remaining in their account must be submitted. An email request is also acceptable. Graduating students. Students who are graduating at the end of the year will need to submit a written or email request to receive a refund. Funds can be transferred to a sibling's account with a written request. Unclaimed funds. All unclaimed funds must be requested within one year. Unclaimed funds will then become the property of the Lunenburg School lunch program. Adopted, insert date, page 2 of 2. So there were two errors that I noticed. One was at the very beginning. Unpaid meal charges place a large burden on school districts. I think it's the school district. And then the other one was, I think the A in à la carte should be lowercase. But those are the only two errors I noticed.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I just want to make a statement for the public in case they weren't in on an initial read of these two. It seems like these two should be together. But when the state audited our lunch program, they said they had to be separate. So hence, we are separating. Any other comments about this? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve both of our third read policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the third read policy of 3701.01 and insufficient funds and 3701.02 meal charging.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose? Okay. There we go. Next on our agenda is the ESER Amendment.
Hi, everyone. Mike Cassidy, business manager. So tonight, we're bringing forth the transfer of ESER 2 and ESER 3 accounts. This was originally presented on February 1st. It was posted on our website. We suggest any comments from the public. We did not receive any comments regarding these transfers. So that's a report out on that information. None of the numbers have changed on the transfer. And I will share that and go over it one more time. So ESER 2, which expires on September 30th, 2023. We are proposing moving some additional funds to the instructional staffing. Those are the teachers that are being funded out of that grant. Specifically, the increases to the math coordinator position. That increase will also increase the fringe benefit as it automatically contributes funds to MTRS or the retirement system for the teachers. Surplus funds are also requested for the support and purchase of iReady materials next year for K-8. And finally, the surplus, the leftover budget amounts as we see it right now, 3706, will be a support purchase of Chromebooks. ESER 3 expires in September 30th, 2024. We are proposing moving the primary guidance counselor. And, excuse me, we're not moving those positions. Currently, the guidance counselor at the primary school and the math teacher at the high school, those positions are funded by ESER 2. There's funds available that we can extend those positions with ESER 3 funding. That is being proposed. The increase to the instructional salary, once again, we have to increase the fringe, or it'll impact the fringe, which is actually gonna go down. And that reflects, that reduction, that line item was over-budgeted because we were anticipating individuals to be taking health insurance. That did not take place. So ESER 3 is more simple as far as what that is being supported. I would anticipate as another transfer in ESER 3 next school year as we move forward during the school year and we identify any surpluses or deficits in that grant. So those are the summary of what is being proposed in front of the school committee tonight for your vote and approval. This is all business. Once again, I think at our February 1st meeting, we were gonna bring it back on the 15th. We chose to give it some more time. There was really no rush at that time. And we just extended an opportunity for the public to offer comments. So I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions that the school committee may have.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the ESER accounts? Mr. Beardmore?
Comment and just a quick question. First of all, Mr. Cassidy, I think you've done a really admirable job for the last few years on all versions of ESER and earlier federal funding. In addition to that, this is not simple. And you've done a very good job at managing it and keeping us apprised. And for the public's benefit, these are funds that are gonna take us into next year, but then they're going away. And so everything that we've been talking about basically represents a dead end at the end of next school year. And this is, you know, back to what I was referring to earlier. In these funding concerns, this is very high on that list of funding concerns in terms of how do we continue to do some of the things that we've done to address the needs in our schools? The only question is, is have you received any other commentary on this beyond what you received at this board back on February 1st?
No. Then that's over.
Okay. And once again, I would reiterate, you've done a wonderful job keeping track of all this and spending it and having a plan to spend it all. Where looking through all kinds of literature from all different groups, whether it's MASC or MASSS, they're all talking about how you can get people to spend the funds. Well, you have spent them and spent them well. And we appreciate everything you've done in doing this. And it will be part of the commentary I make on March 7th, that we did spend the money, now what? Because that is a legislative issue. So we thank you very much. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to approve these transfers?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I? Opposed? All righty.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Under new business, we received a letter from Anna Lockwood, who is the chair of the Parks Commission. And I can read that or you can speak to the topic, either way.
I can speak to the topic.
Okay, go right ahead.
Questions? Good evening. Anna Lockwood, 91 Main Street. I'm also the chair of the Parks Commission. I reached out to Carol requesting support from the school committee in the upcoming select board meeting the Parks Commission will have with the select board. We made a request for ARPA funds in order to help us renovate Marshall Park. And, you know, and it's important to show the value of that project to the community. And my request was if the school committee could as a body or maybe a few representatives join us at the meeting. Ms. Carol suggested maybe, you know, write a letter in support, which that would do the work as well. You know, Marshall Park is a tremendous asset to the town. And the goal is to make it even a bigger asset. But also, as pertaining to the schools, is that's where our baseball and our softball teams play. My son played there for four years. It's very meaningful. So that is an overlap in interest of having that park renovated. Currently, I mean, I don't wanna talk too much baseball, but, you know, we have the back net behind the batter. It's very close to the batter with a net above. So we might be the only baseball team that you cannot get an out with a foul ball from right there. So.
That's a good thing.
Right. That's problematic. You know, it does affect the quality of play. You know, they do say that baseball is a unique game. Every park is different. But that one, I do think, should be detrimental to the game. Also, currently, the park does not have any restroom facilities. The proposed redesign does offer bathrooms and other improvements. The softball field is also not in great shape. It's just the dugouts need a completely redo. The fence is not good. And it really has got to the point that, you know, repairing, it's not going to really do as much. So the select board has $3.5 million available. I know they have had a lot of requests. And I, you know, and I appreciate that. We requested $2 million because that would be a nice big jumpstart to the project. The project is, budget should be, as of last April, to be about $5.1 million. We have found, and we're going to be applying for about $2 million in grants, mostly from the state. There's other, there is a dog park that is a private grant. So, you know, we're willing to do the work as much money as we can get from this. I think it'll be the best and the easiest for the community. And I don't wanna, you know, say anything negative about the other requests for ARPA. But one thing I'll mention, and it's my personal opinion, is there are a lot of requests that are for things that we would like to have. There's some requests there that overlap with capital requests. And this is a unique project for us. Really an opportunity to do something meaningful with the money that we receive from the federal government. So that's my request. I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Mr. Beardmore?
So first of all, thank you for taking this to the school committee. I think that your proactiveness on this is commendable. And thank you for including us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
In this. I know that, as you outlined, I think we've both been at the Sleckman meetings when these have been read through, all the requests that have gone on pertaining to ARPA. I think to a certain degree, the select board has culled through some of them and has expressed their opinion negatively on some of them, which I tend to agree with. Just as a point of information, I think at the last select board meeting, not this week, but the week before, they did approve just shy of $1 million to commit for the ambulance and the two six-wheel dump trucks, which don't really give us any budget relief because the funding mechanism for those three items was the special purpose stabilization account. So it keeps our stabilization where it should be theoretically, if we don't tap into it, to backfill some of this money. But it also gives us the benefit of putting those items on order now, all of which will be backordered rather than waiting until July 1st, which is when we would have to do it using the capital planning mechanism. So my reason for going through that is we're now down to $2.5 million, unless they choose to actually spend special purpose stabilization funds on those items later on, which I believe there's a mechanism to do that.
Right. I believe that is their plan.
But right now, there's $1 million committed and some administrative costs associated with ARPA. All of that being said, I support your request 110%. I'm not sure if $2 million is the right number. It could be $1 million. It could be $1.5 million. But when we started talking about this the summer before last, I attended a workshop, and I think you and your committee were there, as well as members of the finance committee. There was general consensus that a large chunk of this money should go to a project that benefits the quality of life for all of Lunenburg. And so far, I can't think of a single proposal outside of yours that does that.
Outside ours.
Ours. Fair. Point taken. That does that. I think that, you know, Marshall Park has historically been a jewel of this town. The historic commission, or maybe it was the historical society, published an article on Facebook many months ago that talked about one of the Proctor ancestors who first raised the money to put the track at Marshall Park back in the early 20th century. That track served us for nearly a century. And since then, there have been some minor modifications since the new track has been put at the middle high school. But it's been neglected over the years. And your point about it servicing our students as one of its primary functions is well-taken. And I think that it deserves the support of the school committee. Beyond that, it will also be the home of the skate park, which hopefully will be built this summer and is the home of where our elementary and middle school kids play Little League and our boys and girls in the high school play baseball and softball. And I think that your plans also demonstrate some ideas to make it more useful for the community as a whole, to include hiking trails and access to the pond and whatnot. So in my mind, I can't think of a better way to spend this money. And I wholeheartedly support it and would gladly vote for anything that we could do as a committee to include a letter of support as well.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments?
I would just echo what Peter said. And I, again, love the collaboration. And anytime we can get committees together to work together on a common goal, I think that's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
I obviously would very much like to see this project go through as well. I had a daughter that played softball there, and it was horrible then. And that was 20 years ago. So, yes, I would very much like to see this go through. So I think what the best thing to do, because you don't have a date for this, or do you?
No, we don't. It's looking to be probably towards the end of March.
Of March, yeah. So what I would do is, I think I should draft a letter and just put that our committee supports the use of ARPA funds for this project and, you know, the advantages to the school district for this park in operation and to the community as a whole. And then I would send that to the select board. But I would also, when you do know the date, anybody that may be available, Tuesday nights are problematic for me, so I probably won't be. But anybody who is available to attend that meeting to perhaps make a public comment, we will take care of that at that time. Is that fitting to everybody, or is there a better idea?
If that works.
Okay. So all those in favor of writing a letter in support of the ARPA funding of Marshall Park? Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion about writing a letter in support of funding for I'll make a motion about writing a letter in support of funding for Marshall Park. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will take care of that.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate you all.
Well, we thank you very much for coming and including us.
It takes a village.
It does. Try as we might. Okay, we're on to extended day and early learning center handbooks. And I see we have Mrs. Gillette hanging out way over there in the back. Well, wave.
Okay.
So, did you want to speak to it, or did you want Patty to?
I'd ask Mrs. Gillette to just give a quick overview of any changes that are in the handbooks for the early learning center program and our extended day before and after school program.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here. So, we really don't have that many recommendations or additions or deletions this year, as the school committee last year made some major changes for us in regards to policies, cost, hours of operation. So, a lot of the things we have to do are just name changes, or, you know, updating emails and contact information and stock dates. So, as you can see from the first slide, the extended day summer recommendations, this will be our stock date, it's a five-week program. We need to update our calendar, our weekly theme calendar, which we are working on right now, we're trying to get vendors who will be coming in, so we will have that updated when we go live online, which is, we're anticipating April 3rd, and that information will be there. So, the only thing we want to delete really from it is that we'll serve Peter every other Friday and ice cream, and that's because of allergies with food, we had issues last year, so that's the only thing we really want to change, other than updating our other information and the discrimination statement. In regards to our extended day fall recommendations, again, update all our contact information, our registration, as I said, will open April 3rd, it will be live. Our program closing will follow the school calendar, so we will add all the school calendar dates to our registration. And then, in regards, just adding some statements, just for clarification, you were talking about emergency forms earlier in this discussion, and we have the same case that we're finding people are putting, they're putting names on our emergency forms that, you know, the people aren't able to really help out when they need it. So, we're just asking that we make a statement that the contacts are available to respond, also letting people know that if we have to cancel, we did a few times because of early releases with snow this year, that they have an alternate plan already in place for their child, and that they make sure they contact the school secretary to let them know that. And then, also, we will be closed, and not billed on inclement weather, that we don't charge them, which we don't, but they question us this each time, they think they're being billed for something that they're not, so we just wanted to make, put a statement into that fact, so they'll know that. In regards to our early learning center recommendations, same thing, contact information. We did want to delete the part that they can register for extended day for before the early learning center. Last year, there was issues with, we had some three-year-olds attending, which it's not age-appropriate, and for staffing issues, it just doesn't work out when you have such young kids with the older kids, so we would like to delete that. Once again, we'll update our closing to reflect the school calendar, they'll not be billed for the days they're not there. And then, we wanted to add refrain from sending snacks containing nuts, we have, every year we have children with nut allergies, and that's been some issues, and last year, we had someone with a life-threatening issue, so we are, we wanted to add that. And really, that's it, there was no major changes this year.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Beardmore?
Thank you for bringing this to us. My question is pertaining to fees. On the extended day handbook, you reference fees approved on March 16th, 2022. Will there be an update to fees brought to us this year? Is that anticipated?
No. No, we increased it last year, and it was the first increase in several years. We do block billing, so for the mornings, it's $12, for the younger kids, in the afternoon, it's $12, for the older kids, T H E S, it's $9 in the morning and 12 in the afternoon for the block billing, regardless of how long they're there. The buses arrive at 3:30, they can stay till 5:30, and it's just a set fee, so we won't be requesting another increase.
Okay. That was my only question.
I don't have a concern with it, but I have a question about the non-discrimination statement. I have never seen one quite like that, I was just curious as to where it came from.
I was given the non-discrimination statement by the school, we did, I did not come up with that.
Well, then I will ask.
That's why I'm...
Dr. Burnham.
Oh, Liz.
Could I jump in on that one?
You sure could.
If I can?
Yes.
Okay. So, the non-discrimination statement actually came out of the TFM audit.
Oh.
From Ms. Hanscom. This was something that she sent to me last year, and I started updating all of the handbooks with it and everywhere else. We now, though, MASC has put out an addition, an addition to the non-discrimination statement, and I will read it to you, so you'll know what I'm going to be putting into handbooks this year and policy as well. It's basically to include the expanded definition of race, to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protected hairstyles. And then, the correlating legal reference to Acts of 2022, Chapter 117.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious, because everything that you could possibly think of was included. So...
Yes.
So, I was just curious where it came from.
There was some commentary in the equity audit about, about these statements. Are we in compliance with whatever that commentary was?
I did let the consultant know that we had received guidance from MASC relative to expanding policy language, so she knows that we would be looking to incorporate that language in our policies anyway, it just, it's not there currently.
Okay.
So, if there are no other comments, do I have a motion to approve these handbooks?
I'll make a motion to approve the extended day and ELC handbooks.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, all set, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
You as well, thank you.
So, now we are up to committee reports. So, anyone with a committee report? Mr. Schoolenbreen?
The middle school advisory committee met yesterday, yesterday was the day we were home, it was a snow day. Everyone was basking in the glory of the snow day. Thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Reluctantly, I made that call, I will say.
All I know is that Mr. Shays Green was home by himself without children, so he was super happy. One thing that we talked about was, obviously, the report card that was issued, Ms. Scott walked us through that. We also talked about a change in the dress policy, apparently, they are going to allow hats at the discretion of the teachers, but not hoodies. And Mr. Santry and Mr. McGrath explained why. They also talked about doing some overhauls of different features of the school over the summertime to help make sure that kids that are wearing hats and kids that are otherwise, you know, doing things, that they can keep an eye on them. Because I asked them about whether or not the hats would make it difficult to ID kids or people on...
On camera.
Yeah, and they had already thought all that through. So, most of the time was spent on the hats and the report card, and that was, I think that was it. I had to leave at the last five minutes, I got a call, but that was, that was the gist of the meeting.
What's the, what's the process and timing on this hats policy? Is this a, because I believe it, it's in the handbook.
So, the handbooks will come before the committee?
Yeah.
As usual, in the spring, with any, any changes would be incorporated in the handbook at that time?
So, this will be effective next year?
Next year.
Mr. Shays Green had a really good point, that like, that the teachers are really good at managing it, so that it doesn't become a distraction, and it's not like they're telling their kids to take the hats off. And I, you know, like, I thought through it, and I was like, oh, well, this might be a security issue or whatever, and then he was like, no, this is how it works, and it works well, so we should do that. I was like, okay, that seems right. And Mr. McGrath backed him up, so I feel like they have, they've thought it through, seemed like a pretty good idea.
Okay. Anyone else?
The primary school, Monday, unfortunately, I couldn't attend, but Mr. Adams was kind enough to send me minutes. There is a plan to send out a SWOT analysis survey, and I had to Google it, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's like, what a SWOT. So, they're going to send it to the faculty this week, and then families are going to receive it next week. They plan on perhaps sending this survey out twice next year, once in the beginning, once in the end of the year, and the plan is to use this data for the school improvement to work on things now or to address things that were in issue last year. The continuous school improvement plan was discussed, and primary school advisory council will provide ideas, suggestions, or changes before finalizing a draft to bring before us as the school committee. There was a discussion on how the primary school can provide more opportunities for families to be involved and participate both in the school and with work and activities being sent home. Primary school hosted a very successful math night on Monday, the 13th. I was not there, but my husband was, and I heard so much positive feedback from the community of how much fun it was. So, I wanted to thank the teachers and the honored students to help make that a fantastic event. The PVIS themes have been focusing on kindness and friendship, and there's going to be a tiger performance for the kids on March 31st, and our next meeting is Monday, March 27th.
Alrighty, thank you.
The athletic advisory is meeting on Monday, prior to spring sports. The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee is meeting also Monday, as well as March 20th and April 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
The high school advisory committee will be meeting tomorrow, so we're a little behind everybody else.
Alright. The Finance Committee has met twice since we have, as this is their busy season. On the 16th of February, the town manager presented her budget, which was level service to most apartments. The certified free cash is being held for the overlay for the abatements at the moment. The health insurance numbers will need adjusting, which we know about. At that time, our budget was 3.1%, but that has been adjusted as well. Let's see, the state aid will be known by 3-1, which it has been. The capital plan discussion, there was a question as to whether we should use the AC funds for the elementary school fire alarm instead. That was a discussion they had, that instead of using what had been put aside for us in the capital plan for AC funds, just to switch it over to take care of the fire alarm, there was some concern about using the air conditioning money for a lesser project, but they will ask us about that on the 16th of March, just so you know. And the Finance Committee also met on the 23rd of February with presentations by the Council on Aging and the library. I have to say, I am so impressed with the library. Every time I do anything that has to do with the library, I am just so impressed. And the library, what was germane to our conversation, is that the library director commented on the available STEM materials that can be used by citizens and teachers. And have the teachers been using them, do you know?
I don't, I don't know to what extent they've been using them, it's relatively new.
Yes, yes, that's what he said, it's a new grant. And he said there were some adult-type STEM materials, but the major part was based with kids. So, I thought that was pretty cool. And they are meeting next week with IT and police. So, that is what I have. And if no one else has anything, I would ask if there is any public comment. Mr. Lightman?
So, we had talked about how we're meeting with the representatives, and I feel like the time is going to be pretty...
Yeah.
Pretty tight. I did see that Representative Margaret Scarsdale is having office hours on March 17th at 2:30 at the library, so if people are interested in having a one-on-one, or being able to have more conversations about school-related issues or anything, that would be a good time to meet with Representative Scarsdale.
Excellent. Yes.
I just wanted to, to add, relative to the primary school AC discussion, I did meet with the facilities director at the primary school last week, and we did a walkthrough, and he showed me some of the, you know, sort of physical aspects of where these compressors will be, and how the refrigerant line will be run, to, to different heating elements and air conditioning elements in the classrooms. I think, and I mentioned to both the superintendent and the chair today in earlier phone conversations, this is something that the Finance Committee has expressed some interest in, and I think that it's something that we should put on our agenda for two weeks from now and weigh in on whether we think we should proceed with a, a plan that Mr. Bruce Terry outlined a couple of weeks ago, but I think should be brought to a state of completion based on our comments in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, that leads us to topics for future discussion, so look at that.
Get out.
You set it right up. So, I would, I would say that does make sense to me, that we have a conversation, and are we going in the water or not? Are we going to do this project, or will we be ready for that conversation at that time?
He's been waiting for the contractor to come out and verify that what he sees as the layout placement, et cetera, will actually work. It's been delayed week to week, so that's been the holdup at this point.
Well, we'll put it on the agenda and see what we can...
Yep.
See what we can do. That agenda, of course, also has the budget hearing, and what else?
What I can tell you that I know right now, you'll have a couple of our teachers from the high school before you, looking for approval on field trips, the quarterly budget report for the current fiscal year, personnel report, the Keystone Collaborative Report, transportation policy will be back for a first read.
The third first read.
Groundhog Day. I just, I don't really... And a notation for the other policies to come back in the sequence that they're in for second, third read. But, yes, the primary AC project with cost is on that list.
Unless there's anything else, then, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:38 PM.
Seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.